Hey, good evening and welcome to our 2023 Annual Town Meeting. I am Scott McDermott, your town moderator. I'm honored to be here tonight to preside over our Medfield's annual town meeting. Thank you for being here and engaging with us as a member of Medfield's legislature. Tonight, we come together to discuss and to debate, to deliberate and to decide, and we do our best to govern ourselves and our important local affairs as a community. You've heard me speak about open, participatory, democratic, direct self-government, and I believe there is accountability on town meeting night. We have the executive branch sitting up here and facing you, and I'm up here kind of alone, and we have the warrant committee as well. So accountable to you as our friends and our residents and our neighbors. This exercise is not perfect. I think I've proven that before, might prove it again before tonight is over, but it is certainly a very effective way to come together, to be face-to-face, and to give members of our community a voice and a vote. I'm advised by our town clerk, we have a quorum present. Thank you. Thank you. And tonight, we have 31 articles to address as the legislative body of the town of Medfield. I will now ask our town clerk, Marian Binaldi, to read the return of service of the warrant.
By virtue of this warrant, I have notified the inhabitants of the town of Medfield qualified to vote in elections by posting attested copies of the same at five places seven days before the annual town meeting as within directed. Signed by Constable Richard Davis, posted April 13th, 2023. Marian Binaldi, Town Clerk.
Thank you, Marian. It's now my honor to invite all of our veterans who were with us tonight to please stand, if you would, so we can honor you. And now, if everybody would please stand and remain standing. We're first going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, led by our veterans. Then we'll do the National Anthem, led by Vivian over here. And then we do a moment of silence honoring past town volunteers and employees. So, our Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance, through the flag. Vivian. ... Awesome. Great job, Vivian. Thank you. Thank you. And I also want to thank our jazz combo, Nikhil and Alex and Alexander and Marco. This group here just two days ago received a gold medal at the MAGA State Combo Festival. So they are gold medalists at Wellesley High School. Just a little bit of a further commercial for our great music program in our schools. The Medfield High School Music Department has had a tremendously successful year with the Jazz Band Concert Choir, Chamber Choir, and Orchestra all taking first place at the Big Apple Classic in New York City in March. The Orchestra, Concert Choir, and Chamber Choir all received Civil Medals at the MICCA State Music Festival. But of particular note, the MHS Concert Band received a gold medal at the State Music Festival, and the MHS Jazz Band received a gold medal at the State Jazz Band Finals. Medfield High School is one of only three schools across the entire state to achieve this double gold medal rating. Congratulations to you. Congratulations to the music department. Thank you. If you don't mind, remain standing. I'm just going to ask, if we could, for a moment of silence. Out of appreciation and respect, we ask the town meeting to observe a brief moment of silence in memory of the following volunteers and contributors to our community, and they would be Marcia Driscoll, who was a Medfield Public School Administrator; Joseph Ryan, Joseph Ryan became a firefighter in Medfield in 1947 and served 42 years for the town of Medfield. The last 18 years of his career was as the fire chief. Barry Glassman was a maintenance for the public schools. He was an auxiliary police officer for the town of Medfield. June Economos taught in the Medfield school system for 27 years. Virginia Cusack was a teacher at the Wheelock School, wrote and published a guidebook for newcomers to Medfield, and longstanding member of the Hannah Adams Club. Joan Iafola assisted the Board of Health and was a vaccine nurse. Ronald Flozer was Medfield Public School Custodian and was one of the founders of the Learn to Skate Program for the Medfield Youth Hockey Association. Judy Kerr was administrative assistant at the Medfield Junior High School. And my sister-in-law, actually Janet McDermott, who was a teacher at Medfield Junior High and in the high school for over 40 years. So if you don't mind, we'll just take a moment of silence for those folks. Okay, thank you very much. You may be seated. Thank you. At this time, what we do is we make a motion to permit non-voting participants to sit within the town meeting, to the extent that we are an entity, and to sit within the town meeting and to speak to our community as requested. We reserve a special visitors section of the meeting for this purpose. I would ask Brittany Franklin, the Assistant to the Town Administrator, to read the names of our invited visitors.
List of visitors sitting within the town meeting and eligible to speak. Christine Trierweiler, Town Administrator. Dr. Jeffrey Marsden, Superintendent of Schools. Mark Sorrell, Town Council. Frank Gervasio, Assistant Town Administrator. Brittany Franklin, Assistant to the Town Administrator. Michelle Garette, Police Chief. Daniel Burgess, Police Sergeant. Michelle Lorenzo, the Chief Secretary. William Carrico, Fire Chief. Marie Scoulet, Director of Public Works. Yvonne Remillard, Principal Assessor. Andrew Foster, Town Accountant. Ashley McCullen, Assistant Town Accountant. Kathy Vanenboom, Human Resources Director. Pam Gardner, Library Director. Sarah Hanifin, Council on Aging Director. Katie Walper, Parks and Recreation Director. Amy Collarin, Facilities Director. Owen O'Corcora, IT Director. Carlos Dos Santos, IT Coordinator. Brenda Healy, Public Health Nurse. Megan Rogers, Public Works Office Manager. Sarah Downs, Public Works Administrative Assistant. Marcus Vaughn, State Representative. Becca Roush, State Senator. And Denise Scarlett, State Representative.
Thank you for all of you for being here tonight, for our members of our team, our staff. Thank you for all you do for us. I'd like to recognize, if I could, Senator Becca Roush back here. So say hello to Senator Roush. And Representative Marcus Vaughn is here as well. Marcus, thank you, guys, for being here and coming by from Medfield. Thank you for what you do for us up at the State House. Thank you very much. Now, the introductions from the front of the room. This is Marian Binaldi. Marian Binaldi is our town clerk, my friend, and has done a great job in the preparation of the town meeting with us. So thank you for that. Pete is not here, so I guess Gus, can you take it away with the introduction of the executive branch of the government on my right?
Thank you, Scott. Sure. To Marian's right is Brittany Franklin, the Assistant to the Town Administrator and Public Information Coordinator. To her right, Frank Gervasio, the Assistant Town Administrator. To his right, Christine Trierweiler, the Town Administrator. I'm sitting in for Pete Peterson, who couldn't make it. He's unfortunately under the weather tonight. So I'm Gus Murphy. But anyway, then to my right is Eileen Murphy, a member of the Select Board, and then Mark Sorrell, our Town Council.
Thank you, Gus. And to my left, I have Steve Callahan and Bob Slaney, who are the co-chairs of the Warrant Committee. And Steve is going to introduce the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First, I just, a brief statement that we'd like to thank all the members of the Warrant Committee for their diligence, thoughtful consideration, and dedication to their duties to the town this season. We're honored to be able to serve with this team, which provides such highly valued service to the town. Now for the introductions. To my left is Bob Slaney. To his left is Sharon Tetrow. To her left is Jeremy Marset. To his left is Ed Vozella. To his left is Gillian Rafter. To her left is Mather Eldred. To his left is Peter Michelson. And next to Peter is Brent Nelson.
And I just want to just again echo Steve's sentiments for the great job you've done this spring in reviewing our articles. And I also want to say that we have two members of the Warrant Committee who will be departing after tonight's meeting. Jeremy Marset, I want to thank you, not only for your service to the Warrant Committee, but also for your long service before that to the Water and Sewer Board. Jeremy has recently been named as the Town Administrator for the town of Sherburne, so we congratulate him. Congratulations. And Sharon Tetrow. So Sharon has been an extraordinary member of the Warrant Committee for nine years. Her leadership of the committee through COVID and during the period of the special town meeting process for the school building committee was exemplary. Sharon, though, should also be recognized, even before being Chair of the Warrant Committee, for exceptional efforts in thinking and knowledge and contributions she brought to the evolution of town financial systems and reporting and discipline. So we thank you, Sharon. So thank you very, very much for your service. With the departure of Sharon and Jeremy, I have, again, the privilege of seeking candidates for appointment to the Warrant Committee. I've had the honor of appointing 46 members to the Warrant Committee over my years, and I take great pride in that work they do for our legislature and for the town meeting and for the town. As a note, with Sharon's departure, four of the last six members who have reached the end of their term or who have resigned have been women. So I'm particularly interested in speaking in the weeks ahead with any woman who might have an interest in serving on the Warrant Committee. I'm sure that Sharon would encourage you, but maybe not to serve nine years. I'm not sure. So please just reach out to the Town Administrator's office or to send me an email at the townhouse. I look forward to talking to anybody who would be interested in joining our Warrant Committee. I now ask Steve Callahan, Chairperson of the Warrant, co-chair of the Warrant Committee, to make some brief prefatory remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On behalf of the Warrant Committee, we'd like to thank and acknowledge the dedicated staff of Medfield Administration. Town Administrator Christine Trierweiler, Assistant Town Administrator Frank Gervasio, Treasurer Collector Georgia Calivas, Principal Assessor Yvonne Remillard, Town Accountant Andrew Foster, Superintendent of Schools Jeffrey Marsden, Director of Finance and Operations of Schools Mike LaFrancesca, and all the department heads who have regularly appeared before the Warrant Committee to assist us with inquiries. The town is not immune from tight labor markets, inflationary pressures for wages, energy, and health care costs. These increases are forecasted to exceed the Prop 2.5 framework over the next five years. The budget is overwhelmingly salary-driven, since as a percentage of the budget, salaries and related benefits represent approximately 80% of the total. Salary increases are driven by contractual obligations from recently negotiated collective bargaining agreements for the schools, police and fire departments, and COLA and STEP increases for all staff. For FY '24, our energy costs for school and municipal purposes are budgeted to increase 15%. School transportation costs are budgeted to increase 12%. And the health insurance for both school and municipal employees is estimated to increase at 5.4%. The FY '24 operating budget proposed this year is balanced, without the need for a Prop 2.5 override. However, there are warning signs in the town's forecast that bring into question whether our operating budget is stable and/or sustainable. The latest five-year forecast for revenues is expected to fall short of covering forecasted expenditures for a level services operating budget. The FY '24 budget has been prepared in accordance with financial policies that are designed, so operating expenditures are covered by current operating revenues, not recurring, non-recurring revenue sources. This is the second year in a row that free cash has not been used to balance the operating budget. The Warrant Committee recommends support of the Municipal and Operating Departments' FY '24 operating capital budgets. These budgets proposed by town and school administrations and advanced by both the Select Board and School Committee respectively allow Medfield to meet its contractual obligations and address current needs and move forward the priorities of the town of Medfield. Coming out of the COVID years, the town has managed to rebuild the General Stabilization Fund, so that there are now reserves to help with any future economic downturn or emergency. In addition, we've been able to build up the Capital Stabilization Fund by first using ARPA funds and additional transfers of free cash. The buildup of these funds is very important to maintaining the town's strong credit rating. Before you this year are non-financial articles on topics dealing with the ratification of the Police-Collective Bargaining Agreement, withdrawal from civil service, water conservation, private well restrictions, school committee power purchase agreement and lease authorization for solar full of the photovoltaic, and change of hours and noise bylaw. There are also three citizen petitions dealing with the School Committee Public Hearings, compensation transparency, and the creation of new groundwater protection committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Steve. As many of you already know, I love town meeting. I recognize it has its imperfections. It can definitely be quirky, but nothing makes me happier every year than watching all of you come together on one night, one night, Scott, on one night, to see you collectively vote to move us forward. By town charter, I must provide you a report on the financial condition of the town. I would urge you to read the review of town finances that you can find at the beginning of the warrant report. That will provide you the most comprehensive overview of the town's finances as they stand today. Tonight, I just want to highlight a few things. As Steve mentioned, I'm very happy to report we're starting to see the positive impacts of our financial policies that we put in place in 2018. The guidance and financial discipline in place has allowed us to grow our reserves, address our long-term obligations, and finally fund our capital budgets. When adopting these policies, we set out two long-term goals. The first, to provide the town with the stability to withstand a financial downturn. And second, to help maintain our bond rating, which will help us in the overall cost of borrowing money. This is becoming more important as we move forward with our own elementary school and the proposed new Tri-County school. Ultimately, these policies and the town's dedication and support on meeting these goals has led to better stability year over year, with always an eye to the future. This past fall, the town received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association. This award was given based on our approach to our goals-based budgeting and our commitment to budget transparency. But even with this positive news, I can tell you each fiscal year and budget cycle brings something different to our table. It is a challenge to provide you with the same level of services or even expand those services when our fixed costs, such as contractual agreements, health insurance, supplies, and electricity are increasing and our revenues are not keeping up with that pace. The budget before you, as you heard, is a balanced budget. It addresses the goals of the Select Board. It provides a new shared facilities program manager and begins to utilize the opioid funding to expand clinician services, not only in Medfield outreach, but in Council on Aging. I'm incredibly pleased to report, and you'll hear it multiple times, that this is our second year we did not have to use free cash to balance the budget. I would like to draw your attention to some financial issues that we see as budget concerns on the horizon. Not only the construction of Tri-County and our own school, but we're experiencing wage pressures, as you've seen from several long-term department heads that have departed the town. These are emerging and ongoing issues, and they're going to test our stability and sustainability in our operating budgets. At town meeting tonight, you have several articles to consider, and you're going to hear about all of them shortly. But I would like to take the opportunity to thank the Collective Bargaining Committee and the Medfield Police League for their work on bringing forward a new collective bargaining agreement and the recommendation that the town withdraw from civil service. I would like to personally thank Sergeant Daniel Burgess, who is present this evening and representing the Medfield Police League and their support for our withdrawal from the state civil service system and the adoption of our own local system for hiring and promotions. It was an incredibly long negotiation over the last 18 months. I believe this resulted in a three-year contract that will help us recruit and retain our police officers, allowing us to rebuild and move our police department forward. In closing, I would like to thank all of the employees and volunteers in Medfield and you as a legislative body for being here tonight. Thank you to Brittany, Frank, my financial team, Georgia, Yvonne, Andrew, Dr. Marsden, Michael LaFrancesca, for the hard work and very long hours in putting this budget and warrant together before you this evening. I am incredibly grateful to be a part of this amazing team. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Christine. So relative to our meeting guidelines, the guidelines for tonight's meeting are printed in on pages one and two of the report on the warrant, since I seem to have been warned on the time. Like, I'm the only one that controls how long these meetings go. I won't read all the guidelines, but I will draw your attention to number seven, which speaks to the making of the main motion. Reading guideline number eight. As each article of the warrant is presented, the discussion and the vote are not on the article as printed in the warrant report, but rather on the motion that is on the floor for consideration. Item number 10. Any voter wishing to speak to the town meeting should go to the microphone. Sometimes I designate for opponents and proponents, or sometimes you can just go to the nearest microphone. And upon being recognized by the moderator, please identify yourself by your name, your street address, and if you hold any town office. I'd ask folks to, if they would, to just please turn their cell phones to silent. And, you know, off we go here. As the legislative body, let's enjoy ourselves over the next hour. Okay. In terms of the proceedings and the order of the articles and their treatment, first, we're going to undertake what I call the regular business of the town, which would include articles number one, two, three, four, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 13, and article number 21. After we do the regular town business, we will turn our attention to the budgets of the town. The budgets, articles will be articles 15 through 18 dealing with the capital budget, and article 22, which is our operating budget. After we do that, the remaining articles will be put into the lottery. So in the lottery, we will have articles number five, 12, 14, 19, 20, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30. And we always lead free cash till last. So article number one. Article number one is a vote to accept the annual town reports, and we have a motion from Warrant Committee Member Brent Nelson.
I move that article one be passed as set out in the warrant.
And do you have a report, Brent?
Gus.
That is the report. Thank you.
We're just keeping you on your toes, Scott. We'll be switching around some more over the course.
Thank you. I like that.
Yeah, just very briefly, all four annual reports are now available online on the town website for anyone who's interested in seeing them. I will apologize for the delay in getting the past year's reports out without detailed explanation, but it was me. Printed versions will also be available as soon as we can get them turned around from the printer. I think some of them might, we expected some of them would have been turned around sooner. It's just that supply chain issues are still apparently affecting printers. So that's it.
Okay, well, thank you. Are there any questions and comments relative to article number one? If there are not, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, article one passes. Article number two is an article in which we will vote to fix the salary and compensation of elected town officers. It can be found on page 20 of your warrant report and sponsored by the Board of Selectmen and Warrant Committee Member. Jill, you have a report for us, please? Jill Rafter.
Yes. Move that article two be passed as set out in the warrant.
Thank you. And a report, please?
Each year, the town meeting must vote on the salaries and compensation of Medfield's elected officers. The only elected officers receiving a salary are the town clerk, the Board of Assessors, and the Select Board. A 3% increase has been proposed for the town clerk's salary in accordance with the cost of living adjustment proposed for all non-union town employees.
Well, thank you. Apparently, in 21 years, there hasn't been a cost of living increase for the moderator, but all in favor. Any other comments on article number two? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, the motion carries. Article number three is a motion to amend the Personnel Administration Plan and the classification of positions and pay schedule found on page 21, sponsored by the Personnel Board. And again, Jill Rafter has a motion and a report.
Move that article three be passed as set out in the warrant.
Thank you. And your report?
The salaries of non-union town employees are set by the schedules included in the warrant report. School department employees by state statute are excluded from the town's salary schedule. Most police, fire, and school department employees are covered by collective bargaining agreements. Police and fire personnel salaries are included in this schedule according to the rates set out in the CBA, which includes a 3% cost of living increase. The recommended fiscal year 2024 cost of living increase for non-union personnel is 3%.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on article three? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, the motion carries. Article number four. Article number four is an article in which we vote to implement the collective bargaining agreement with the Police League, offered by the Board of Selectmen, found on page 28 of the warrant report. Warrant Committee Co-Chair Bob Slaney has a motion and a report.
Move that the town transfer from fiscal year 2023 a sum of $90,000 overlay surplus to fund the first year of the collective bargaining agreement between the town of Medfield and the Medfield Police League. In report, the current Police League Collective Bargaining Agreement, CBA, expired on June 30th, 2022. The Collective Bargaining Committee, the Medfield Police League, and the Select Board have agreed to a three-year contract for fiscal years 2023, 2024, and 2025. The retroactive amount for fiscal year 2023 reflects a parity adjustment and a 3% cost of living increase. The CBA also includes the provision to begin the process to withdraw from civil service effective July 1st, 2023. The funding for the first retroactive year of the contract will be from available funds in the fiscal year 2023 budget and the overlay surplus. The Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Okay, very good. Hey, welcome, John. At microphone number one, we have John Harney. John, how are you?
Fine, thank you, Mr. Valereta. And thank you for the opportunity to address the meeting. Article four is a collective bargaining agreement that is obviously, when we look at, filling, or going back to use money from 2023 to fund the failure in the past to make the funds available for various cost of living increases and parity, whatever that might be. Comes like, I guess, as a... be, comes, I guess, as a separate matter, doesn't it? As to what parity means, can you tell me what parity means?
Yes, I can.
Christine?
Yes, there was a parity adjustment. We determined when we did the salary survey and doing the collective bargaining that our police officers and sergeants were paid to the lower end of our salary survey. So a parity adjustment was given at two percent to the patrol and sergeants and two and a half percent to the dispatchers. That was before the three percent for the first retroactive year of the contract.
See, we're laboring under a burden here. I don't believe that most people in the meeting have the document that we're talking about. And it's, it's difficult to go back and look at what wasn't paid in 2002 and see a two percent raise that year, and then three percent, three percent, three percent for the years that we're talking about. Addressing at this point, it looks to this observer that we're coming up with something in excess of ten percent increase. Am I wrong on that? Who's wanting to answer the questions up there?
Could you speak to whether you're in opposition of this, or you're just looking to get clarification?
Well, this is tied very much, as everyone who is informed on it realizes, and as said in the explanation in the book, this is tied to the contract that we're making with the union in town, the police union, and that is going to keep all the personnel, Sergeant Burgess and all the policemen we currently have, under civil service protection. We are taking away that protection, if the article passes, from recruits coming in. Now, there's a problem in town, obviously, with the police department.
Well, look, I'm going to rule that out of bounds. This isn't a referendum, going to be a referendum in the police department. First of all, tell us, are you opposed to this article? Are you speaking in opposition or?
Well, I would, I would like to think that the article five is severed from this.
It is. We're going to do article five in the lottery.
All right. I am not opposed to what the union is taking. I think it's unfair to those coming in, as well, say later on perhaps, but in any case, this is a very high increase, and you have, in the agreement here, you've got wages, longevity, education incentive, the fact that we're moving considerations back under base salary.
This is what a collective bargaining agreement does.
Well, that may well be, Mr. Moderator, but this is excessively generous.
So you're opposed?
No, because it's been bargained.
Well, look, if you're not opposed.
It's been signed off on, but you know that this has been signed by the Selectmen already. We're talking about something that's a done deed, right?
I don't know that, no.
Mr. Sorel, are we talking about something that's already beyond our control?
No.
No.
So, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
It's, it's within the, it's within the legislative body's authorization, the first year of a contract.
But the, then, where is this money coming from? And I understand it's coming from two sources. That we're getting, and how much are we paying for that? That's, I hope, is relevant, Mr. Moderator.
So the retroactive year of the contract, which is fiscal year 23, is estimated, because we haven't finished this, this year out yet till June thirtieth, I am estimating at this point, it's going to be between eighty-five and ninety thousand dollars for the first year, and that will be taken from the overlay surplus that was released by the Board of Assessors. The second year of the contract, which is fiscal year 24, which is your voting on tonight, is approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollar increase. The third year of the contract is the most expensive. It is fiscal year 25, and that is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
So Christine, you're telling me that the funding for the, going back for this year, 2023, we are about two hundred thousand dollars?
No, it'd be between eighty-five and ninety thousand dollars.
Eighty-five and ninety.
Yeah.
And the next year is going to be?
A hundred and ten thousand dollar increase.
Okay.
And the third is one seventy-five.
Fine. But all of this becomes additive as we go ahead. You know, at the town, we have warnings in this meeting bulletin that we face some fiscal problems in the near future. So we should be careful about every dollar that we're funding. And I'm concerned that, pretty much, the total, is the total overlay budget going to go beyond this eighty-five thousand or so dollars? Do we have that, the net of that two hundred thousand left, a hundred and twenty thousand or so?
Yes, this is, this is a hundred thousand dollars in overlay surplus that was voted out by the Board of Assessors earlier this year. It doesn't affect the overlay surplus that's listed in the fiscal year 24 budget.
And we're not taking anything from the overage that we have currently picked here at about two hundred and six thousand dollars?
I'm not sure what the two hundred and six is that you're referring to.
Well, the, there were two, two sources that we're looking to for money, the overlay and the excess in this year's budget.
Yes, we determined in the motion that we would just be seeking the funding from the overlay surplus.
All right. All right, Mr. Moderator, thank you for.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to put article number four as presented, the motion as presented by Warrant Committee member Bob Slaney to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, deem that the motion carries. Article number six. Article number six is a, an article in which we will be voting to create an opioid stabilization fund. This requires a two-thirds vote to create a stabilization fund. Warrant Committee member Peter Michelson is going to provide us a motion and a report.
It's Michelson, not the.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Enormously, but.
No, that's, everybody has the right to have their name correct.
Move that article six be passed as set out in the warrant. And do you want the report, sir?
Please, yes, thank you.
The town meeting with a two-thirds vote can create a special purpose stabilization fund. The town has been a party to the Massachusetts statewide agreement for opioid settlement funds between the Massachusetts Attorney General and certain non-bankrupt opioid industry participants. The town will receive annual payments over the next eighteen years. The town is bound by strict requirements in the settlement agreement on how to handle these funds, and the Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Are there any questions and comments relative to article six? If there are none, we will put it to a vote. All in favor, vote to create the opioid stabilization fund. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'm going to deem the motion carries by the required two-thirds vote. Article seven is a vote to transfer funds into the opioid stabilization fund. Peter Michelson will provide a report on the warrant and a motion.
Move that the town vote to appropriate ninety-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and transfer said sum from certified free cash into the opioid settlement stabilization fund. And the town has received a total of ninety-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars to date from the opioid settlement agreement as described in article six. Due to the timing of receiving these funds, they closed to free cash at the end of fiscal year 2022. Due to the limitation on their spending, they cannot remain free cash, and this article recommends they be appropriated into the new stabilization fund as set out in article six, and the Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Thank you very much. This requires just a simple majority. All in favor of the vote on article seven, to vote on the motion on article seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I deem that that motion carries. Article eight. Article eight is a vote to transfer funds out of the opioid stabilization fund. Transferring out of the stabilization fund does require a two-thirds vote. Warrant Committee member Peter Michelson has a motion and a report.
Move that the town vote to appropriate sixty-eight thousand and transfer said sum from opioid settlement stabilization fund for purposes as set out in the warrant. If the town meeting approves, as it just has, articles six and seven, this article transfers sixty-eight thousand from the new opioid stabilization fund to offset the Medfield Outreach budget request for a new clinician who will work with both the Outreach Department and the Council on Aging to provide additional education and prevention work as outlined in the opioid settlement agreement, and the Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Any questions and comments on article eight or the motion that was presented by Peter Michelson? If not, we put it to a vote. Requires two-thirds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'm going to deem it carries by the required two-thirds vote. Article nine is a article in which we're going to vote to authorize a new vaccine revolving fund, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, and Jill Rafter is going to provide us a motion and a report.
Move that the town amend the Code of Medfield, section 5.10, as set out in the warrant, and appropriate the sum of five thousand dollars into said fund. This new revolving fund established under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, will be credited with the receipts received in connection with the vaccine program operated by the public health nurse. A minimum of five thousand dollars is required to establish the fund, which is proposed to be transferred from free cash.
Any questions and comments on article number nine? If there aren't, we'll vote to authorize a new vaccine revolving fund. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Article ten. Article ten is a motion in which we're going to vote to set revolving fund expenditure limits, found on page thirty-one of the warrant report, and Warrant Committee member Peter Michelson has a motion and a report.
Move that article ten be passed as set out in the warrant. The 2017 Annual Town Meeting in Medfield created revolving funds as part of the Code of the Town of Medfield. Each year, town meeting must authorize the amount of the expenditure limit that can be made from each of these Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, revolving funds as set out above. The revenue in these revolving funds is generated from fees, charges, or other receipts from departmental programs and activities, and the Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Okay, well, thank you for that motion and report. We're going to vote on, any comments or questions on the motion? Yep, microphone number two.
Hi, Abby Marble, Sixteen Pheasant Road. I'm just curious why Park and Rec was excluded from that list?
Questions, comments?
Park and Recreation has a different revolving fund authorized by the state and doesn't need to be reauthorized by the town every year.
Okay, thank you. Let's put article ten, if we could, to a vote. In favor, if there are no further comments, to vote to set our revolving fund expenditure limits. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, deem that the motion carries. Article eleven. Article eleven is a vote to accept funds into the Cemetery Perpetual Care Trust Fund, found on page thirty-two of the warrant report, offered by our cemetery commissioners, and Warrant Committee member Jeremy Marsette has a motion and a report.
Move that article eleven be passed as set out in the warrant. Each year, fifty percent of the purchase price of cemetery plots is transferred to the Cemetery Perpetual Care Trust Fund. The other fifty percent goes to the Sale of Lots Fund, which can be used for capital improvements and/or expansion of the cemetery. The balance in the Cemetery Perpetual Care Trust Fund as of December thirty-first, 2022, was one million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy, nine hundred, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. The Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Are there any questions on this article, on the motion that was offered? If there are not, we'll put this to a vote. All in favor of accepting the funds into the Cemetery Perpetual Care Trust Funds, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Our next article is article thirteen. Article thirteen is a vote to appropriate the local PEG access funds. We have a motion and a report from Warrant Committee member Brent Nelson.
I move that the town appropriate two hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and nineteen cents from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund to Medfield TV for the purposes set out in the warrant. The annual town meeting in 2019 passed article five, which created a public, educational, and governmental or PEG access and cable-related fund to handle the distribution of funds received in connection with the franchise agreement between the town and cable operators. These fees must be used to provide PEG access services and programming. This article transfers those funds collected to date to Medfield TV, and the Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Are there any questions or comments on article thirteen? If there are none, we're going to vote to appropriate the local PEG access funds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'm going to deem the article carries, the motion carries. Next, next article is article number twenty-one. Article number twenty-one is a vote to pay a prior year bill. It requires a four-fifth vote, and it is Mather Eldred, Warrant Committee member Mather Eldred has a motion and a report.
Move that the town appropriate the sum of six thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty cents from overlay surplus for the purpose of paying the following prior year bills incurred in fiscal year 2022 and fiscal year 2021. There were multiple invoices that were not received until the after the close of the fiscal year in 2022. Since the general ledger books were closed for the prior fiscal year, it is now necessary to appropriate a total of six thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-one cent, fifty cents, in order to provide payment on prior year expenditures. This requires a town meeting vote of eighty percent. The Warrant Committee recommends approval.
Any questions on a vote to pay a prior tax year bill? Requires a four-fifth vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'm going to deem it carries by the required four-fifth vote. We're now going to move on to our budget articles. That's, we have gone through those items that we identified as regular town business. The first of our articles on the budget is article number fifteen. Article fifteen, under that, we will be voting to transfer funds to a municipal building stabilization fund. Can find it on page thirty-four of the warrant report. It was offered by the, the Board of Selectmen, and Warrant Committee member Sharon Tatro has a motion and a report.
Move that the town transfer twenty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars received from the Massachusetts School Building Authority for reimbursements of the Dale Street feasibility study, forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars in unexpected appropriation funds and the remaining balance at June thirtieth, 2023, of the FY 2023 Emergency Repairs Fund as set out in the warrant to the Municipal Buildings Capital Stabilization Fund. This money was received from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, as the final reimbursement payment for the feasibility study that was approved at the 2018 Annual Town Meeting. The feasibility study was appropriated from the Municipal Building Stabilization Fund, MBSF, and therefore, any reimbursement must be transferred back to this fund. The unexpendited appropriations are from former capital and municipal building projects that have been completed or no longer necessary. In addition, the annual town meeting appropriates a sum of money each year from the MBSF to be used for emergency repairs with the Select Board's approval. The remaining balance at the end of the fiscal year must be transferred back to the MBSF. The Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments relative to a motion to transfer funds to the Municipal Building Stabilization Fund? If there are none, we'll put that to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I deem that article fifteen carries. Article sixteen. Article sixteen, the motion on that will be a vote to appropriate and transfer funds for capital projects and municipal buildings. This does require a two-thirds vote, and Warrant Committee member Sharon Tatro is going to give us a motion and a report on this article.
Move that the town appropriate one million, four hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred dollars and transfer one million, four hundred and five thousand, five hundred from the Municipal Building Capitalization, Capital Stabilization Fund, and eighty-five thousand from the Parks and Recs Revolving Fund for projects and purposes as set out in the warrant. The 2018 Annual Town Meeting and subsequent override in June of 2018, the voters of Medfield approved the creation and funding for a special purpose stabilization fund entitled the Municipal Building Capital Stabilization Fund. The purpose is to fund new construction, capital repairs, and improvements to municipal buildings and structural and systemic components thereof. The projects listed above that have been identified, reviewed, and recommended by the Capital Budget Committee to be completed utilizing funding available in the dedicated Municipal Buildings Capital Stabilization Fund and the Park and Recreation Revolving Fund. The Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Are there any questions, comments on article sixteen, the vote to appropriate and transfer funds for the capital projects for the municipal buildings? If there are none, I'm going to remind that it takes a two-thirds vote for passage. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'm going to deem it carries by the required two-thirds vote. Article seventeen is a vote for the appropriation to the Capitalization Stabilization Fund, offered by the Board of Selectmen on page thirty-seven of the warrant report. And again, Warrant Committee member Sharon Tatro is going to provide us with a motion and a report.
Move that the town transfer the sum of eight Move that the town transfer the sum of $850,000 from free cash into the Capital Stabilization Fund. The 2021 annual town meeting approved the creation of a special purpose stabilization fund entitled the Capital Stabilization Fund. This fund can only be used to fund capital projects and the debt service related to capital projects, including equipment, vehicles, repairs to equipment and vehicles, public works improvements, and other non-municipal building and non-school building capital projects. The $850,000 will be transferred from available certified free cash. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Thank you. Are there any questions on Article number seventeen? Motion for the appropriation of funds to the Capital Stabilization Fund. If there are no questions, we'll put that to a vote, requires just a simple majority, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed? I'm going to deem that it carries. Article eighteen is a vote to fund our capital budget. The funding of our capital budget does take a two-thirds vote, found on page thirty-seven of the warrant report. It's offered by the Board of Selectmen and the Capital Budget Committee and warrant committee member Sharon Tatro has a motion and a report for us.
Move that $1,296,095 is appropriated to pay costs of funding the capital projects described in Article eighteen and the recommended amounts identified in said Article eighteen for each such project, including all costs incidental and related there to the approved capital projects. That to meet this appropriation, the town shall fund each of said approved capital projects from the recommended source of funding identified in said Article eleven and the Board of Selectmen is authorized to enter into any contracts and to take all actions necessary to carry out said approved capital projects. The 2021 annual town meeting created the Dedicated Capital Stabilization Fund, which began the process of a long-term funding mechanism for the capital budget. The first step in this process occurred in FY 2020 with the adoption of the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan, CIP. The FY 2023 capital budget requests are included in the five-year CIP that as adopted by the Capital Budget Committee and are consistent with the town's financial policies. This year's requests are funded from multiple sources, including the Capital Stabilization Fund, Park and Recs Revolving Fund, and the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds. If these capital items are deemed allowable expenses under the town's American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA stimulus funding, that will be utilized first before the funds from the Capital Stabilization Fund. The select board has already voted to authorize up to $350,000 of ARPA funding for the FY 2024 capital budget. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Are there any questions or comments on the motion to appropriate funds for the capital budget? Okay, if there are none, we will put this to a vote, it does require a two-thirds vote, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Okay, I'm going to deem it carries by the required two-thirds vote. Okay, Article number twenty-two can be found on page forty of the warrant report. This is our annual operating budget, it's offered by our Board of Selectmen and I'm going to, what I am going to do is I'm going to read, as is our practice, the titles of the various sections of our budget. As we go through, it's very interesting to see where our budget goes to. I'm going to read these items. If you want to put a hold, if you want to have a discussion or a question on these, please just yell out hold, we'll reserve that, and we will come back to those questions and comments after we've gone through the line items in the budget. Okay, so I'm going to begin on the top of page forty-one with workers' compensation insurance, health and life insurance, liability insurance, unemployment compensation, Medicare insurance, county retirement contribution, OPEB contribution, selectmen salaries, selectmen operations, town administrator salaries, town administrator operations, warrant committee operations, town accountant salaries, town accountant operations, assessor salaries, assessor operations, treasure collector salaries, treasure collector operations, town council operations, human resource salaries, human resource operations, information technology salaries, information technology operations, town clerk and election registrar salaries, town clerk and registrar registrar operations, conservation commission salaries, conservation commission operations, planning and zoning salaries, planning and zoning and appeals operations, public buildings and property maintenance salaries, public buildings and property maintenance operations, town report meeting salaries, town report meeting operations, police operation salaries, police operations operations, traffic markings and sign operations, fire and rescue operations and salaries, fire and rescue operations operations, inspection salaries, inspection operations, sealer salaries, sealer operations, emergency management salaries, emergency management operations, animal control salaries, animal control operations, tree care salaries, tree care operations, highway salaries, highway operations, snow and ice salaries, snow and ice operations, street lighting operations, equipment repair, maintenance and salaries, equipment repair, maintenance operations, sidewalk operations, solid waste disposal salary, solid waste disposal operations, cemetery salaries, cemetery operations, health salaries, health operations, council on aging personnel, council on aging operations, veteran salaries, veterans operations, library salaries, library operations, park and recreation salaries, park and recreation operations, historical commission operations, Memorial Day and Veterans Day operations, arts and cultural council, our reserve fund, our town debt principal, our town debt interest, regional vocational school operations, school personnel, school administration operations. So hearing no holds, do we have a motion from the warrant committee? Well, we do have a hold. Do we have a hold? If you could approach microphone number two, please. Which article did you hold, Carol?
I have a question, I don't know if it's a hold. What about the stuff that says less use of this, less use of that? Is that, I just have a question about that underneath.
Okay, what's your question?
Is this the time? Carol Reed?
Sure.
195 South Street, thank you. Here, and I like the less than, which reduces, it says less from opioid settlement stabilization fund, et cetera, et cetera. I understand that. Article eighteen, we just approved, had ARPA funds, some ARPA funds, funding the capital budget. I don't see ARPA funds here.
They don't need to be in here.
Okay, so ARPA funds aren't voted on by us?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Is there a way to find out how much we've gotten and where those funds were allocated or is that a separate discussion?
I could, I could hand you my list tonight if you want to read it, but you can also go to the town's website, we have an ARPA website that has all of that on there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Hearing no holds, do we have a motion on the budget?
We do. Move that the town appropriate $69,319,327 to the various departmental operating budgets to defray the operating expenses of the town for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2023, as set out in the Article twenty-two of the warrant report under the column FY 24, warrant committee recommends, and that to meet said appropriation, sums be raised on the fiscal year 2024 tax levy and/or transferred from other available funds totaling $4,019,239 as set out in the warrant report. Warrant committee recommends passage.
Are there any questions or comments on our operating budget? Requires only a simple majority. If there's no further comments, we're going to put this to a vote. All in favor of the operating budget, please say aye. Opposed? Going to deem that the operating budget carries. Okay, well, that brings us to our lottery, so now the articles that I identified at the beginning of the meeting, that would be in our traditional lottery, I will pull them one at a time and we'll deal with those articles as pulled. The first one is Article number twenty-seven. Article number twenty-seven is an, is an article anticipating a vote to amend water conservation code regarding private well restrictions. Do we have a positive motion from the warrant committee?
There's no, there's no positive motion. It is our understanding that the select board will take the year to review and study this issue and may bring back an article for the 2024 annual town meeting.
Do we have a positive motion from the floor? Not having a positive motion, I move to dismiss, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed? And I, and I go to, I deem that the motion carries and I'll go to a member of our select board, Eileen Murphy, who wants to just speak to this.
Yeah, so I, I want to bring to everyone's attention, the reason I'm here tonight and why I ran is that I think it's so important that the town has a voice, every citizen should have a chance to speak to, to topics. And I broke my own rule. I was at the warrant committee meeting, I think it was three weeks ago, and Steve and Bob and the warrant committee asked me a very straightforward question and they said, Eileen, have you had a chance to talk to any well owners? And I've had a lot of people over the last year, especially during the summer, approach me and talk about the wells and water and use. And, and when they asked me that question, I couldn't say yes. And I think it's, I apologize because I, I think it's so important to be able to speak to all the citizens and get the feedback. So I reached out to the warrant committee to let them know that I, I was going to change the vote because we originally had voted two to one. We just had a meeting before this meeting and we did change our vote. And I will ask that the citizens that are here tonight that have wells know that I do want to reach out to you and the board wants to reach out to you. It needs to be a open discussion and talk about water, talk about resources, talk about the wells' potential changes. So it's removed from this evening, it doesn't mean that we may not be back again next year to talk about it, but if we do, I would think that everyone would have had a chance to talk to the board and we will have a chance to talk to you. So that is the reason why we did what we did.
Good, thank you. So Article twenty-seven was dismissed, our next article in the lottery is Article number twenty-nine. Article twenty-nine is an article in which we would vote on a citizen's petition regarding compensation transparency. Do we have a motion from the warrant committee, warrant committee chairperson Steve Callahan?
Yes. Move to amend the code of the town of Medfield, Chapter ten, Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Councils, Article one, Administration, by adding a new paragraph 10-8, contents of annual report. The annual report shall include the wages, salaries, or other compensation of all town employees and to redouble the succeeding paragraph. And the report is that wages, salaries, and other compensation of all town employees currently is public information. Publishing that information for all residents to view in the annual report increases financial transparency and is good government. If approved, this information will be published in the 2022 annual report. It's already, as of last week, it's already been made available on the town's website. The annual report is the proper location for this information. If published in the town warrant, it would increase printing and mailing costs, but could also give the false impression that town meeting has the authority to negotiate salaries or set a salary for an employee. It does not. Warrant committee recommends passage.
Okay, we're going to vote on the motion regarding the citizen petition on compensation transparency, we have a positive motion from the warrant committee, are there any questions or comments? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Article number twenty-eight. Article number twenty-eight is a vote on the citizen's petition regarding the school committee public hearings. Article twenty-eight, do we have a positive motion on Article twenty-eight from the warrant committee? Not hearing a positive motion from the warrant committee, I'll go to the citizen petitioner and the sponsor of the article to make a positive motion.
Chris Potts from Seven Curve Street, I move that through a non-binding resolution, town meeting asks the school committee to amend its public participation policy, BEDH, and/or public hearing policy, BEE, to allow for a specified number of community members as it deems appropriate to request a public hearing on an issue within school committee purview and to set the steps and requirements necessary to provide due notice in line with other public hearings that are mandatory for school committee.
Okay, I'm just going to repeat, if you don't mind, the motion, move that through a non-binding resolution, town meeting asks the school committee to amend its public participation policy, BEDH, and/or the public hearing policy, BEE, to allow for a specified number of community members as it deems appropriate to request a hearing on an issue within the school committee purview and to set the steps and requirements necessary to provide due notice in line with other public hearings that are mandatory for school committees. And so do we have a, a report on, on this article?
Yes. The warrant committee unanimously recommends that you vote against the motion on Article twenty-eight. The non-binding motion put forth tonight by the petitioner is different than the printed warrant article. It's different because what's printed in the article is not consistent with Mass General Law and unlikely to get approved by the Attorney General's Office. The reason, as advised by legal counsel for both the town and school, is that the proposed article infringes on the statutory authority established by Mass General Law and granted to the publicly elected school committee through the electoral process. Town meeting, representing a legislative body, cannot dictate actions or infringe on the authority of the executive branch and publicly elected boards and committees. It would be considered an action outside the authority of the town meeting. Further, a motion to amend a charter would be deemed out of order by the Attorney General's Office for not following proper procedure and therefore would not stand by not meeting the six-month requirement. The town would waste valuable financial resources hiring lawyers to push through something we know would be dead on arrival. We do support public input in the form of citizen petitions and in this article, we have discussed our concerns with the petitioner on several occasions. Today, we got confirmation that the petitioner changed the motion submitted to the warrant committee just a week ago. The motion on the floor tonight is a non-binding resolution that does not amend or add to town charter provisions or our bylaws. In its simplest form, town meeting as the legislative body creates and/or amends bylaws and charter provisions. Town meeting also has the power of the purse and votes on all financial matters of the town. Non-binding resolutions do not fall into either of those categories. This non-binding motion asks the school committee to allow for a specified number of community members to request a public hearing on any topic within the school committee's purview. The non-binding motion is asking the school committee to amend a recently approved public comment policy that the petitioner had spoken in support of at a recent public hearing. You must ask yourself, why would the school committee draft requirements for public hearings on issues that they already, is their responsibility to address? We are concerned with such a narrow scope targeting the school committee. They currently have a written policy of asking for public comment before every vote and holding public hearings as deemed advisable. Do other town boards and committees have a similar written policy? The select board does not currently have a written policy on public hearings and only holds them when required by law. Should there be consistency in current policies of all appointed and elected boards and committees regarding public comment or hand hearings? We believe the proper method to hold officials accountable is through the election process. If citizens believe that a publicly elected official is not responsive to their concerns, they can always organize and support a campaign around an opposing candidate. We have elections every year for both the select board members and school committee members. Disagreements and concerns with elected officials over not being heard on critical issues or not being granted public hearings on certain matters should be settled at the ballot box. We elect members to boards and committees to conduct their statutorily established authority granted to them through the electoral process. Our publicly elected boards and committees have the freedom Our publicly elected boards and committees have the freedom to conduct public hearings as deemed advisable. They are elected to make judgments when necessary, and the school committee is no exception. Being heard by our elected officials today occurs in many ways and forms, and we agree that the school committee should be held responsible for ensuring that they are listening to the community. We just had an election during the same period this petition was put forth. The makeup of the existing five-member school committee includes two brand-new members and one elected a year ago. As we saw at one of their recent meetings, all school committee members have authority at any time to change the chair of the school committee with a simple motion. This effectively results in having a check over the meeting agenda authority of the chair. If other members disagree on decisions the chair is making regarding agenda items, they can vote for a new chair. However, let us not confuse, quote, "being heard," end quote, with agreeing or disagreeing with school committee decisions. You will rarely see unanimity within our community with school committee decisions. It just doesn't happen. Sometimes you may disagree with those decisions, or you may believe they have made a wrong decision. The ballot box is the place to decide if school committee members are unresponsive to the community, or if you have disagreements with decisions they have made. As publicly elected members, they have accountability, unlike appointed members to committees. The Warrant Committee unanimously recommends that you vote against motion on Article 28.
Okay, well, thank you. And so because of the non-binding character of this article, and where it's coming up very early in our meeting in terms of the articles to be pulled from the lottery, we're going to limit discussion and debate on this and try to move through this relatively quickly. I have, we'll be providing our citizen petitioner, our sponsor, with three minutes to speak, and then a representative from our school committee will speak, and then we'll have some engagement from members of the community that want to speak for a minute as opponents or proponents of this particular article. So I'll turn to microphone number two. Christine, why don't you speak, if you would, in favor of your motion?
Thank you. Chris McQuipott, Seven Curb Street. I just want to, before I go into my prepared remarks, I also just want to correct some, make some factual statements. The Mass Municipal Law Unit regularly reviews non-binding resolutions and amendments put forth at Town Meeting, and we have, in fact, here in Medfield, done the same here with previous Town Meeting non-binding resolutions that we have passed, so it is absolutely proper. School Committee is not Executive Board; they are Legislative Board, just like the rest of us. So why is this article important? We all have a vested interest in our schools and the education of our children. Holding public hearings on issues that are important to us is a crucial part of ensuring that our schools are meeting the needs of our students, families, and the community at large. A public hearing by its very nature is a request for listening. Here are three specific reasons why this article is important and why I ask you to vote yes. First, public hearings provide an opportunity for us to collectively voice opinions and concerns about important issues beyond just a short block of regular meeting time on top of other pressing school committee business. A 45-minute hearing on one dedicated topic provides for rich dialogue and a chance for many more citizens to participate. Second, public hearings promote transparency and accountability in school governance. When school committee holds public hearings, it helps to show that is willing to be open and honest with information, listen to community concerns, and take feedback seriously. All of this builds trust and fosters a sense of partnership between school committee and our community, and especially so when grade reconfiguration, declining rankings and ratings, private school departures, declining high school enrollment, and special education issues are among frequent topics of community conversation. And finally, just like this Town Meeting, public hearings are an important part of democracy, including due process under the Constitution. As taxpayers and members of the community who care deeply about children, we all need to be given meaningful chances to participate and guide the decision-making process of our schools. Public hearings do just that. Playing the long game matters. Community input should never be viewed as an annoyance or hindrance to progress when, in fact, public hearings can help our school committee make better informed decisions and create policies that more accurately reflect our unique Medfield community. In the end, we have seen firsthand how ignoring or dismissing public sentiment causes problems and challenges that cost both time and money while eating away at community trust. Tonight, we have the ability to convey that our collective voices matter. I urge you to support Article 28 and the motion that was just put forth tonight, so that at a bare minimum, issues of critical importance can be put on the table for school committee discussion and consideration. There is no mandate. Our school committee and our community have nothing to lose by supporting this non-binding article. In fact, we have everything to gain.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments. So we turn now to microphone number one. Michelle, will you introduce yourself?
Yep. Michelle Kirkby, 27 Planting Field Road, Vice Chair of the School Committee. I would like to say that the school committee has not been given time to deliberate on the amendment made to this article. That being said, the spirit of the article remains, or the spirit of the amendment with the article remains the same, so I'm going to go forward and read the statement that the school committee prepared. I'd like to start by thanking the members of the Warrant Committee, as well as the moderator and the Select Board. I know everyone spent a lot of time and thought looking into and evaluating many of the articles we're discussing tonight, and this one in particular was no exception. We really appreciate your time and dedication to Medfield. Thank you. The school committee has also been very active in participating in interviews that the Warrant Committee sponsored in order to help them study this fairly complex topic. We are happy to share the various ways that we have taken additional steps to engage with the public and adjusted policy in areas such as public input. We are pleased that after their study, they were unanimous in their decision to dismiss this article. From a legal perspective, the school committee's counsel has confirmed that Article 28 unduly infringes on the school committee's authority to set the agenda for its meetings, which is contrary to both state law and existing policy. Specifically, Article 28 attempts to take away the school committee's statutory and policymaking authority to set its agenda as it sees fit. Under this article, citizens could file petition after petition with the school committee, thereby tying up its agenda with items the school committee may or may not support and grind the functioning of the school committee to a complete halt. Tying up agendas in this fashion would take away from the school committee's focus of being able to make decisions that are in the best interests of our children, parents, guardians, and the school district. We, as a school committee, are very concerned about the precedent this article sets. It would require extensive resources to manage when, at the end of the day, we should be focusing on our schools and the needs of our children. In addition, it infringes on the electoral process as members of the school committee are elected every year. The school committee has extensively reviewed this article, and we oppose it. The Warrant Committee extensively reviewed this article, and they recommended dismissal. We ask the voters here tonight to join the school committee and the Warrant Committee and vote no on Article 28. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, so we're going to have, we're going to have comments back and forth for just a couple minutes from opponents and proponents. Are you an opponent?
I'm an opponent. I'm Kenneth Manning, 11 Pueblo Road, and I'm an elected member of the Board of Assessors. I'd like to rise in opposition. This would open the door to 25 citizens having the school committee teach that the earth is flat, to target teachers for what they teach in the classroom, to ban books in the library, and all sorts of problems that we've seen around the United States today. We have an elected school board, as you, Mr. Callahan, referred to. We're there to make decisions. If you don't like their decisions, you vote them out. You run yourself. I'm glad to see that the Warrant Committee has unanimously opposed this. I stand in opposition as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Microphone number two.
Jerry Potts, Seven Curb Street. So these comments are not in regard to the motion that's currently in front.
Whose comments? The comments you're going to?
The comments that are, Michelle's comments about the motion doesn't relate to what's currently being voted. Is that correct? The motion that's now being considered is the one on the non-binding, correct?
The motion being considered is the one, yes, that Chris presented. That's the motion.
So I'm not sure what, on a non-binding commit, the school committee is acknowledging that they're not addressing the current motion on the floor, which is a non-binding recommendation.
I think what the school committee was, by way of clarification, was addressing that the last motion they had an opportunity to meet and consider was the motion from last Tuesday night. So now we have a substitute motion that Chris presented.
So my understanding, though, there was a meeting before this Town Meeting tonight, correct?
Yeah, there was. The school committee did have a meeting before this meeting. We, however, did not have the amendment in front of us in order for us to deliberate on any additional wording.
Okay. So I just want to address, there's a lot of comments about misinformation and what the intent of this is. We had a couple of years ago a non-binding citizen's petition that came in front of Town Meeting in regard to reconsidering the school vote. And at that point in time, that passed. It was non-binding. It wasn't prohibited from being put forward at Town Meeting. It was...
We're past that, you're right. I've allowed and permitted this non-binding resolution tonight.
Well, people are saying that this isn't, shouldn't be allowed.
No, but we're here to consider it, and, you know, so I have, just so everybody knows, this was with my consideration permitted of the motion to come before this Town Meeting despite its number.
I'm specifically addressing the comment from Steve that said that this has never happened before. It has happened before. We've allowed it to go forward in exactly the same motion to allow the town to be heard.
Let me just draw a distinction, if I could, though, just so for future reference, so that it don't take us down, that this, this motion, the non-binding resolution, comes within the context of Article 28. It's not, at its inception, it was not a non-binding resolution to consider it, so we didn't consider it from the beginning as a non-binding resolution. But after we, the Warrant Committee hearing last week, through discussions, this is the resolution we're considering.
So my point on it is, we had one of the most extensive discussions on a very expensive topic, which was the school, and we'll have another one very soon. And part of the concern that happened during that process was a feeling that there wasn't ample opportunity for a hearing. There was public input allowed at public meetings. That isn't the same thing as a public hearing where you can fully articulate. And going through that process, I would just caution, we need to build a school. And I think the community needs to come together behind that, and the way that we will do that is by allowing the public to feel that they're listened to. And I think this is an appropriate comment, because the decisions that we have coming up are going to be critical to get right. And I think at this point in time, we should, as a town, be erring on transparency and listening as much as possible. So I'm in favor of it, because it's not saying that we're going to force book burning. It's saying that we're going to listen to people as a community, and then our elected officials can make whatever decision they want. We're not taking away anything by saying, please, on important topics, give us an opportunity to be fully listened to. And that's all this is now, is a non-binding. So I encourage you to vote in favor of having your voice heard.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for comments. Let me just test this microphone. Are you speaking in opposition? All three of you are lined up in opposition?
Opposition, yeah.
Okay. You're in favor? If you don't mind going over to the other microphone, that would be, that would be great. We'll go back to microphone number one for a comment in opposition.
My name is Claire Pickering. I live at 26 Chaney Pond Road. I'm speaking against Article 28. The citizen's petition would set a dangerous precedent. We elect our school committee members, and thus, the town has spoken. We trust these elected officials to represent us. Further, our school committee members are our neighbors. They live, shop, support, and educate their own children in Medfield. They, too, want what is best for our school system. This petition would allow a vocal minority to hijack a committee of elected representatives. In fact, my understanding is only 10 people had to sign on to add this article to the Town Meeting. This is a slap in the face to all of us registered voters that showed up to vote for our school committee members. 763 for Mr. Brem, 769 for Ms. Kirkby, 878 for Mr. Knight, 460 for Mr. Horn, and 437 for Ms. Simonini, just this past March. All of these numbers surpassed the 338 registered voters that attended last year's Town Meeting. Allowing just 25 citizens the power to derail the school committee is not the best way to serve our students and staff. In fact, after speaking with both of the former school committee chairs, over the last five years, they could think of only one time a request that was actually in the purview of the school committee was denied, and that was to protect student privacy. This is a problem we don't have. We're, binding or not, we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist. We cannot allow this vocal minority to continue to wage their personal vendetta against Dr. Marsden. The cost to our town...
Well, now, look, I have promised both sides that this was not going to be a referendum on this question, on the, on the, on the motion that's before us, if you direct your final comments to that. Thank you.
These are resources we should be using, helping our students, faculty, and staff, and not indulging the whim of a small group of people that think they know better. I urge those of you who want to effect change in our schools to vote and run for office.
Thank you. Microphone number two.
Hi, I'm Nancy Sterling from 21 Hospital Road. I rise in support of this motion. That being said, I don't have the expertise or the resources here to figure out whether this is an appropriate legally binding, it's not binding, but legally drafted motion, whether it would be accepted by the AG, not accepted by the AG. So I can't speak to that. What I can speak to is the people who are elected sometimes need guidance from other citizens. And this is a situation where I think guidance could be provided by citizens, by a broader group of citizens than 10 people, and have the school committee have the agendas be out sooner, more detailed, and more hearings. I rise in support of this motion.
Thank you. These will be our final three speakers in opposition and as proponents of this, so then we will put this to a vote. It does not require a two-thirds vote, a simple majority on this, this resolution. Microphone number one.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Pastore, 6 Liberty Road. I am in opposition. I urge everyone to vote against it. I find it ironic that an article that's aimed at transparency is so shrouded in mystery and last-minute change. It hasn't gone through the normal process, this amendment. This is not what we had 30 days ago. It's not what the relevant committees have reviewed. It's not ready for prime time. Frankly, the original article was fatally flawed, had a lot of problems, but at least it did something. Legislation should either require action or prohibit action. This doesn't do either. I don't know what we're doing here. It's...
Mike, you know, for years, we've authorized studies, we've done...
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. This is my time.
I mean, it's, I understand. I'll let you speak, but you just need to speak accurately. We've never done that. We have.
I didn't say, I, I asked you to speak accurately as well. I didn't say we've never done that. I was saying what I believe legislation should do, and this does not do that.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Thank you for your consideration.
Clarification.
In any event, this is trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist, and it's not doing it particularly well, so I ask everyone to vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number two.
Hi, Teresa Prago, 41 Pleasant Street, the parent of four children, none of whom are in Medfield schools now. They're in college or working, gainfully employed, thank goodness. I have no vendetta against Dr. Marsden or any of the school board, but I am a supporter of this amendment. I also was not one of the 10 that signed, so there are at least 11 people supporting this. You know, the, the concept is not mal-intent. It seems to have become an assumption that this is a group or voices that, that want to attack something or, you know, take down the school board. I don't think that that is the intent, certainly not my intent, nor that of my neighbors and many people in my age group, who are concerned about the school system, don't have kids in the school system right now, but would like the opportunity, if there is something that is of concern, to be able to raise the, the point and say, you know, can we have a public comment or the ability to be heard here? So I would be in support of the revised amendment, and to speak to the clandestine operations or the, the way that these amendments happen, I'm also the co-petitioner for the number 30, and have learned a lot in the process. A citizen's petition, there's a lot of back and forth, and because it is just that, a citizen's petition, you know, it is not clear-cut. And so I think that this process has been very informative. I hope that we can all listen and be heard and try to come up with ways in which we cannot be attacking each other, but allow for the opportunity for all sides to be heard. So I'm in support of this.
Microphone number one.
Michael Weber, 40 Planting Field Road. I'm in opposition of the article, although I don't know exactly what it is anymore, unfortunately, because of the switch.
It's not that hard. Just to be clear, we are voting on the motion, not on the article. As I read at the beginning, it with each, and this has been, you know, our policy forever. The article frames the issue, but when we come to Town Meeting, we're voting on this motion. The motion is, so you know what we're voting on, the motion that was read by Chris.
So generally speaking, the school committee, if you don't like their job, vote them out. If you don't feel like your voice is heard, vote them out. It is elected every year. I think citizen's petitions generally are... I think citizens' petitions generally are awesome. I think they bring good things to light. I think this particular one could hold the school committee, you know, if I have 25 signatures and I have eight issues, I can have eight meetings, you know, over and over and over, and that will just grind them to a halt. So generally speaking, I think, you know, if you don't like your school committee and you don't agree with what they're doing, speak to them, and if they don't, you don't get a proper response, you can vote them out. So I'm opposed to this article.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your comments. Just a clarification, Chris. Do you have something to clarify?
I do.
Okay, just make a short comment.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to just address the comments with related to that this motion kind of came out of the blue. I believe in modeling behavior, and I actually took to heart a lot of the feedback that I in fact got from school committee and from the warrant committee, and wanted to make this purposely a non-binding petition to not take away the powers of school committee, but to try and just at least provide a mechanism that they would understand how important, how important it is for the community to be heard. So there was no backdoor, you know, maneuver to try and change things, but to really to model the kind of behavior, to listen to the people that rose up, brought up objections to this, and to try and make it something that was more acceptable to the community.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. And Warren Committee Member Ed Vazella has a comment.
I'll be brief. I've changed this a little bit because we had a new motion this afternoon, but when it comes to public hearings, I think we all can agree that the more input they have, the better it is. But as it stands now, when you have a public hearing under the way we operate today, it's a matter of the judgment of the school committee. There's only two public hearings mandated by law for the schools. One is the budget, and the other is school choice. That happens every single year. Beyond those, the school committee must exercise its judgment as to whether an issue or subject matter rises to the level where they deem it's appropriate to have additional input. When that happens, they can and would have a public meeting. I think what we have to do here is trust that the school committee will listen to us and react appropriately for significant issues. That's their job. That's what we elected them to do. The second thing I would say is, when it comes to non-binding, on the surface, everyone would say, my goodness, of course, that's just, that's like motherhood and apple pie. You should have everyone's opinion. However, there are some downsides. The problem, as I see it, is if the school committee decides not to have a public committee, public hearing based on their collective judgment, they will now be put in a defensive position, and perhaps labeled as non-responsive in the newspaper next week, or obstructionist. There could be valid reasons why they didn't want this public hearing. It could be sensitive information and not available to the public. Why do we want to put the school committee in that position? Would you run for school committee if this was the way the town operated? This is the only board where this is being requested of. There's ample opportunity to voice your opinion as the school committee has outlined in the past. There's emails, there's the public comment section within the public meetings. Don't fix what isn't broken. We've heard that before tonight. Let the school committee do their job. Your remedy is to vote for somebody different. We've heard that multiple times tonight, if you don't like their judgments. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to reread the motion here, just so we're clear on what we are voting for and what constitutes opposition and support of this article, the, excuse me, the motion. The motion was to move that through a non-binding resolution, town meeting asked the school committee to amend its public participation policy, BEDH, and/or the public hearing policy, BEE, to allow for a specified number of community members, as it deems appropriate, to request a hearing on an issue within the school committee purview, and to set the steps and requirements necessary to provide due notice in line with other public hearings that are mandatory for school committee. So a motion in favor will support that motion that I just read. A motion opposed would be in opposition to the motion. Okay? So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to ask, if I could, for a show of hands. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. And all opposed? I'm going to deem that the motion fails to carry. Okay, our next article is Article 14. Article 14 is a vote which would appropriate funds for the Affordable Housing Trust. We have a motion and a report by warrant committee member Brett Nelson. It's found on page 34 of the warrant report.
I move that the town appropriate $15,000 from free cash to the Affordable Housing Trust for purposes set out in the warrant.
And your report, please.
At the 2017 annual meeting, the town approved the creation of the Medfield Affordable Housing Trust and funded the trust with a $1 million bond authorization to fund affordable housing projects in Medfield. However, this authority is limited to acquiring real property or a deed restriction in real property, but not for other purposes, such as to pay consultants to study or structure an affordable housing proposal. Since the trust does not have an operating source of funds, it is financially constrained from pursuing its affordable housing goals promulgated in the housing production plan, which guides the town in achieving and maintaining Chapter 40B Safe Harbor. One of the trust's unmet housing production plan goals is the creation of a group home to provide affordable housing to Medfield area citizens with intellectual and developmental disabilities. The trust currently has a consultant surveying area families whose adult children with ADD might benefit from a group home. When the results from the current study are accepted by the trust, a request for information from group home developer or operators will be issued, ultimately leading to a request for proposal for the establishment of a group home in Medfield. It is to engage any needed expert to advise the trust and to prepare the requests for the group home initiative that the Affordable Housing Trust is requesting this one-time appropriation from town meeting. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Any questions or comments on Article 14? It requires a simple majority for passage. Any comments? Newton, do you have any comments from the Affordable Housing Trust?
So my name is Newton Thompson. I live at 5 Evergreen Way, and I am on the Affordable Housing Trust and am a initiator and proponent by definition of this article. And I have a brief statement that I'd like to share with everyone. So with this article, the Affordable Housing Trust is working to fulfill the goal of the current Medfield Housing Production Plan to develop a group home in Medfield for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. This specific goal was set out in the town's first housing production plan submitted in 2016 to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Although we have funding from the bond issue authorized in 2017, at that annual town meeting in 2017, those funds are authorized for land acquisition or interests in real property. They're not eligible for so-called soft costs, such as consulting or legal fees, which are typically needed in the research and planning phases of a project. Tonight, with town meeting approval of this article, the Affordable Housing Trust will have needed funding to proceed with the next phase of the trust's group home initiative, which will be to solicit requests for proposal from group home developers and operators to create a five-resident group home in Medfield. If the trust is successful in bringing a group home to Medfield, we will have, one, provided an important opportunity for adults who need housing not currently served by the housing market, and, two, contributed to the town's subsidized housing inventory in order to reach and sustain the goal of having 10% affordable housing. Currently, we're at approximately 9%. So thank you for your positive consideration of Article 14.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor from warrant committee member Brett Nelson. Any other comments or questions regarding this Article 14? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm going to deem that the motion carries. Article number 26. Article number 26 is a, an article to change the hours of, under our noise bylaw. We can find it on page 48 of the warrant report. It was offered by our Board of Selectmen. And do we have a positive motion from the warrant committee? We do, from warrant committee chair, co-chair Bob Sliney.
Move that the Medfield Town Code, Chapter 180 Noise, Article 4, Section 180-5, be amended as set out in the warrant. The current noise bylaw prohibits noise from commercial uses and operations from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. seven days a week. This article would amend the current bylaw to prohibit noise from commercial uses and operations on Saturday before 8:00 a.m. and Sunday before 9:00 a.m. You may review the list of commercial uses and operations in the existing bylaw. The warrant committee has a positive motion of six votes and three in opposition.
Thank you. And we have a minority report from warrant committee member Mather Eldred.
As a member of the warrant committee voting in the minority on Article 26, we would like to express our opinion on why we're in opposition of the article. While we understand that the proponents of the article have good intentions in trying to provide residents with some peace and quiet during weekend mornings, we believe that the proposed change is unenforceable and would only create more problems than it solves. Firstly, we believe that the proposed change of hours from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. on Saturdays and 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. on Sundays is too narrow and arbitrary. It is difficult to enforce such a specific timeframe, especially given that noise levels can be subjective and vary from person to person. This means that the police department may receive calls from residents who are dissatisfied with their neighbors making noise outside the designated hours, causing unnecessary strain on law enforcement resources. It is important to consider the needs and the circumstances of all residents, not just those who prioritize weekend relaxation. By limiting noise at specific hours, the proposal may impede the livelihoods of those who need to conduct early morning commercial work or activities. Finally, we believe that the change, believe that the proposed change may not have a significant impact on reducing noise levels in the community. If the current noise bylaw is not being enforced, it is unlikely that the proposed change will have a greater impact on noise reduction. Instead, it may create confusion and resentment among the residents who feel unfairly targeted. Overall, we understand the desire to reduce noise levels in the community. We do not believe the proposed change of hours for the noise bylaw is the best solution, as this may be a focused issue with a small part of the community. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. So we heard both in, as proponents and opposition from the warrant committee. Does anybody else have any questions, comments that they'd like to make at microphone number one or two? Please step up if you would.
Hi, Johann, 31 Chaney Pond. I had a question. There appears in the current code that there's an exception for residential owners, so apologies if it seems arbitrary. What's the difference between somebody mowing my yard and me mowing my yard at 8:00 a.m.?
Somebody want to speak to that?
So can I chime in on this, just to give some grounding?
Sure, please.
So there was an incident that occurred last summer with, I'm going to play this for you, just so you can feel this. This is what happened. This is what caused the conversation among some residents. And the whole thing is targeting more towards commercial contractors coming into your neighborhood so that, I had this ready to go, and then I hit it with my thumb as I just looked up. I apologize. There we go. Okay. That was at 7:35 on Labor Day weekend on a Saturday morning. And the moment that went off, there were conversations on Facebook, there were calls being made, and when someone approached me Labor Day weekend and said, how can this happen? I'm like, I don't know. I would assume that we, that can't happen, that it should be a little bit later in the morning. So this is strictly targeting, so if you're having contractors come to your house, they should at least have the common courtesy to, on a Saturday, start work at 8:00, because that sound, when it was a beautiful Saturday morning, and that's what you're hearing having your coffee, is crazy. And to think that we should at least have common courtesy on a Sunday to start at 9:00. Now, if you, as an individual homeowner, want to do what you want to do, go ahead and do it, and then if your neighbor comes out and they're, and they don't like it, I think we would have a common courtesy conversation. But it's just literally asking our contractors not to come in too early, not saying, my younger brother does development in Boston, they can't do any work on Saturday and Sunday. We're not saying that you can't do work on Saturday and Sunday. It's just reaching out and having the common courtesy to treat your neighbors fairly. So that's what it's all about. It's not so you can't go do your own raking and et cetera.
I can just envision the potential for sound effects in the future town meeting.
I have a drumroll for future point.
Questions, other questions or comments on this article? Bob, can I ask you to just restate the motion, and we'll put it to a vote?
Motion, move that Medfield Town Code, Chapter 180 Noise, Article 4, Section 180-5, be amended as set out in the warrant.
Okay, we're going to put that to a vote. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to put that now to a show of hands, if we could. All in favor of the motion? All opposed? I'm going to deem the motion carries. Next article is Article 5. Article 5 is an article in which we are going to vote as to whether we're going to revoke the acceptance of civil service. Can be found on page 28 of the warrant report offered by the Board of Selectmen and warrant committee co-chair Bob Sliney has a motion and a report.
Move that Article 5 be passed as set out in the warrant. The Medfield Police League and the Select Board have reached an agreement for a successor collective bargaining agreement, CBA. The proposed CBA includes support from both the town and the police league to begin the process to withdraw the town of Medfield from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Civil Service System and institute a local managed system for hiring and promotions. For more information on civil service, please read the review of town finances at the beginning of the warrant report. If this article is passed by the town meeting, it will then move to a ballot question at the March 2024 annual town election. The warrant committee unanimously recommends passage.
Are there further questions, comments? Okay, Mr. Harney.
Can it, Mr. Sliney, can you tell me the, why are we looking at next March at the regular town meeting if we're making something effective in the article quite soon?
Mark, do you have a thought on that?
I can answer.
Legally, Mark, civil service, you have to come out of it the way you went in it. Apparently, it's been researched and determined, and if there was any question, you do both the town meeting and a ballot question. So it's legally required to get you completely out legally.
All right, so what we're looking at is withdrawing from civil service that we entered into as a town in 1948. It has served us well. The town has a lot on its plate with the things we've been dealing with tonight, not just schools, but water and sewer and other items, that should be of compelling purpose for our Board of Selectmen as well as all of us. Now, when we look at this article, note that the officers who are on the force now will keep civil service protection. Only be the new members of the union coming in who will not have that protection. And that's repeated again and again in the 17 pages that really are relevant to what we're dealing with here, and which I gather were not distributed very broadly. You can, however, find them on the web. There's a regular police contract. Secondly, there's an agreement, an MOA, that brings that, effectively an amendment to the contract. And then, thirdly, there's an exhibit that only very recently was completed. All in all, it's a lot of paper that comes down to the simple fact that the officers involved now with the town as employees have decided that they will keep the benefits and get all of that was put into this package, and it's a very rich package of benefits going to the present members of the police force. Those benefits supposedly are, well, realistically, will not be part of the package offered to individuals coming on. It's a serious matter for a town to get out of civil service. We don't have anything, as far as I know, to replace it. That's a promise that we'll institute something. Who's going to institute that? Not without the police league, the police union being involved, and you're back into, as we've been into before, years of negotiating. So we all know that we're dependent on public safety. You never know when it will strike your own home, your own children, but, so we want a police force that is content and skilled and well-educated, and civil service helps to protect that. I have never worked on the civil service, but I respect the fact that the Commonwealth cares enough for cities and towns to make this available to them. And if we pull out of civil service, we are engaging far more costs. We have to pay for everything that the Commonwealth is now doing in vetting qualified patrolmen and sergeants, and, yes, even chiefs of police.
So John, you're gonna speak, you're speaking in opposition to this? I've provided you the same three minutes I provided to the speakers before.
I'm saying it's, it's very untimely, and it's, we have, this is a major decision, and it's coming.
That's why we're here in town meeting.
It's, it's a major decision.
Correct.
That is not known really by the people of the community. They have not had the opportunity to have the documents. They should have been circulated, and we should have had months of discussion on this. We haven't. It may be, other towns have dropped civil service, and they may have had a reason to. We've stayed with it until now, and suddenly we have.
I'm not sure it's so sudden, it was framed in the warrant in January, right?
Pardon?
It's been in the warrant. On the website, I mean, it's, this has been framed.
I have not seen, perhaps, there have been, have been meetings that I've missed, but I watched very carefully, the warrant committee, the Board of Selectmen, and I have an interest. It's been a long time, 58 years in town.
No, I know.
I've watched it all, okay? So it would be my strong recommendation that this article not be approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Microphone number two.
Yeah, Chris Pot, 7 Kerr Street. I'm, I don't have a for or against, I just have questions. With regard to, people may not realize, but under Chapter 41, Section 97A, we have what we, what's known as a strong chief form of governance in Medfield. And basically, what that essentially means is that we have a police chief who has the authority to make suitable regulations governing the police department, subject to the approval of the Board of Selectmen, and if it's not, if that approval's not acted on within 30 days, they automatically become effective. When, if we are abandoning civil service, this is going to require us, Medfield, to develop our own, basically, policies and practices with regard to recruitment and also with how promotion, promotional criteria will be, will be established.
Can I just ask for the question?
Yeah, and so the question is, what would be the role of selectmen to, to, to review these policies, procedures, regulations to govern the hiring and promotional practices going forward?
So clarification on that, Chris, we actually don't have 97A. It is a misprint in the chief's contract, she is not a strong chief. We have actually neither accepted 97 nor 97A. Town meeting back in 1926, and then again in 1988, appointed a police chief, but we have no action on the 97 statute. The Select Board retains control.
Oh, okay. The chief man, there was a, in the Anna Report, chief man, when he became, it was voted on this 97A, and it's in the contract, so it doesn't exist?
Not that we found.
Okay, so I guess, but the question still is, what would be the role of the Board of Selectmen?
The Select Board are the appointing authority for the police department still.
Correct, but I get, what I'm saying is, if we abandon civil service.
They're still the appointing authority.
And there're gonna be new hiring practices?
Yes, those are in place.
Promotional criteria? The Board, the Select Board will actually review those before they're adopted?
The collective bargaining agreement has come up, and the collective bargaining team has an agreement with the police league to approve the new hiring policies and procedures. The Selectmen have reviewed those.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yep.
Okay, any other questions or comments on Article 5? We're gonna put the question to a vote, having to do with the revoking acceptance of the civil service. A vote in favor would be a vote in favor of revocation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Could I see a show of hands? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? I'm gonna deem that the motion carries. Our next article is Article number 23. Article number 23 is a vote to fund fiscal year 2024 Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund budget. We have a, a motion and a report from Warrant Committee member Jeremy Marsette.
Move that the town raise, appropriate, or transfer from available funds the sum of $3,240,787 for the Water Enterprise Fund and $2,173,895 for the Sewer Enterprise Fund as set out in the warrant. The warrant, the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds were created in 1990 and allow each enterprise fund to account separately for all financial activities associated with the delivery of water and sewer services for the town. The Enterprise Fund Enabling Statute provides that enterprise revenues may only be used for enterprise-related expenses. A full copy of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund Budget is included at the end of the warrant report for your review. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Do we have any questions, comments on the motion on Article 23? If we don't, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor of the motion to, to fund the fiscal year 2024 Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article 30. Article 30 is a vote on a citizen's petition regarding the creation of a groundwater protection committee. Do we have a positive motion from the warrant committee?
We have a negative motion, move that Article 30 be dismissed.
Okay, do we have a positive motion from the floor? There be no positive motion, be no positive motion from the floor. I would move to dismiss. I see them, but they're not there to make a positive motion. So there not being a positive motion, we move to dismiss. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I've asked Jeff and Teresa, they could take a minute to make a brief statement. They were the sponsors, they were the citizens on this article, so gonna permit them to make a statement.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Hyman, 1 Metacomet Street. As the lead petitioner for Article 30, I just have a brief statement. Based on feedback from the Select Board and understanding that we don't have a positive recommendation, oh, sorry, sorry, guys. Based on feedback from the Select Board, we've had meetings, and, and also with the Warrant Committee, that we don't have a positive recommendation at this time, we will defer the creation of an appointed committee at this time and will instead organize and function as an independent citizen group called the Medfield Groundwater Protection Action Committee, or GPAC. This committee will focus efforts to better understand the aspects, impacts, and potential risks that may affect Medfield's groundwater. We will continue to meet with neighboring town committees to better understand regional community initiatives and concerns impacting groundwater, and work towards developing meaningful citizen education and awareness campaigns. In the spirit of transparency, we will endeavor to collaborate with applicable town boards and departments to ensure understanding of our mutual goals and objectives. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for our conversations, and thank you for your interest in citizen petition. Thank you very much. Next article. Our next article is Article 24. Article 24 is a vote to rescind bond authorization for the water treatment plant. We have a positive motion from Warrant Committee member Jeremy Marsette and a report.
Move that the town hereby rescinds the $500,000 portion of the $12 million borrowing authorization approved by the town on May 17, 2021, under Article 13, for the water wells and water treatment plant project that has not been used and that is no longer needed for such purpose. At the 2021 Annual Town Meeting, the town voted under Article 13 to authorize borrowing $12 million to pay the cost of constructing and reconstructing water wells and constructing a water treatment facility at the site of the so-called Well 3 and Well 4 located off Elm Street. On September 29, 2021, the town borrowed $11,500,000 through the issuance of bonds to finance costs of the project. The $500,000 balance of the borrowing authorization is not needed to complete the project. This article seeks town meeting's approval to rescind the unneeded portion of the borrowing authorization. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Are there any questions or comments on Article 24? This, excuse me, on the motion requires just a simple majority. If there are no questions or comments, we will put this to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I deem that the motion carries. Our next article is Article 12. Article 12 is a article which addresses the funding of the Vine Lake Cemetery Expansion Study, offered by the DPEW Director and the Cemetery Commissioners, bound on page 33 of your report, and Warrant Committee member Jeremy Marsette has a motion and a report.
Move to appropriate $80,000 from the sale of cemetery lots, fund for purposes set out in the warrant. The Cemetery Commission is recommending the town begin the process of developing a master plan for the expansion of the Vine Lake Cemetery. The cemetery expansion study will examine plot layout, grading, retaining wall design, planting, drainage, and road design. The expansion of the cemetery is expected to provide 1,193 additional plots. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Thank you. Questions or comments regarding this article? If there are none, put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I deem that the motion carries. Article 25. Article 25 is an article in which we would authorize the school committee to enter into power purchase agreement leases. This does require a two-thirds vote. Was offered by the Medfield Energy Committee and the Medfield School Committee, and Warrant Committee member Ed Vazella has a motion and a report.
Move that Article 25 be passed as set out in the warrant. This article provides the authority to the Select Board and/or school committee to negotiate and enter into purchase power agreements, PPA, and lease agreements with solar developers for projects at the high school, middle school, and memorial school, and any other school property. A PPA is a commitment to purchase power produced by solar panels at a negotiated rate for a 25-year period, achieving savings on electricity. In addition, this article provides the authority for the Select Board and/or school committee to lease school property for the construction of solar canopies and/or rooftop facilities. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Questions and comments regarding Article 25? Requires a two-thirds vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Deem it carries by the required two-thirds vote. I'm gonna do just a little, if I, if I could, Brittany Franklin, Assistant to the Town Moderator, has, has done a trivia contest, tried, to try to attract and promote town meeting, and I am selecting right now the winner of the grand prize from that, and it is Andrew Short. Is Andrew here? Okay, well, Andrew will be notified that he can come by Town Hall and pick up his grand prize, right? So thank you, and thank you for spreading the word on, on town meeting. Appreciate that. Article 19. Article 19 is a vote relative to the design and construction of a garage at the Council of Aging. This was offered by the Board of Selectmen, and Warrant Committee member Jill Rafter has a motion and a report.
Move that the town transfer the sum of $300,000 from the proceeds of the sale of the Hinckley South parcel for the design and construction of a garage at the center at Medfield. Article 20 of the 2021 Annual Town Meeting acquired additional land from the Council on Aging to accommodate a shift in the Hinckley South proposed senior housing development closer to the center at Medfield. The Select Board negotiated an increase in the original proposed sales price, taking into consideration the additional land from the Council on Aging. The Select Board agreed to set aside a portion of the proceeds, not to exceed $300,000, for the design and construction of a garage for the COA buses. The revenue generated from the sale of municipal property is subject to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 63, which allows the town to use the funds for a purpose that would be eligible for at least a five-year debt issuance. The remainder of the proceeds from the sale of land, $450,000, has been placed in the sale of land reserved for appropriation account.
And Warrant Committee.
The warrant committee recommends.
Passage, yes, thank you, and so Article 19, relative to this topic, at microphone number one.
Question?
Yes.
Has, has anyone determined whether or not the buses could be parked at the town garage rather than spending the $400,000 to build a separate garage at the center?
Question?
Let me, let me maybe address that. If you think about the reason behind the garage, it's needed with the COA, it's to park the buses during snowstorms. If you go back to why the town garage was first justified as having as much parking as it has, is to put snow plows in during winter storms to keep them warm inside the garage so that they, because what they used to do before the garage was built was had to run them around the clock to keep everything warm enough, to keep the plows working. So the most important time to be able to put those buses in the garage would be the very time that the kind of industrial activities of snow plows would need the garage, the garage at the same time.
Do we know for a fact that the town garage would not have the capacity to, to have three vans at the same time?
I think, I think you may want to let Mo speak specifically to that, but.
Okay, welcome, Mo. You would introduce yourself, and then you could speak to that question.
Good evening, Murray School Aid, Director of Public Works. The town garage, I mean, we have, through stormwater, our MS4 permit, we have all our equipment, all the equipment that we can fit in the garage. There are still equipment that we have outside of the garage that we cannot fit in there. There is no extra bays for any of that, of, of putting extra vehicles in that garage at this time. When the, what I understand was when the garage was built, four bays were eliminated that would have given us more ample room, so we're doing with, without those four bays. So each bay is full with all our equipment, you can come down anytime. It's seasonal, we have everything undercover so that no oil, no gas, no parts go into our waterways. That's one of the reasons why everything is in the garage.
So we're building a $400,000 garage for three vans for the time that it snows? It's, it seems to me like an absorbent amount of money for, for a very small usage.
Well, thank you for those comments, yes. Microphone number one.
Hi, yes, Dr. Heather Sullivan, 24 Tubrec Drive. I'm short.
You can turn the mic down.
All right, Heather Sullivan, 24 Tubrec Drive. Is, are we only using the garage for buses, or are we using it for other things like rakes and anything else important for the center? Or is it just the buses? And how many buses do we have?
Three.
Sure. Why don't we hear from the Council on Aging, right behind you? If you want to speak to how it would be used, is that what you're recommending, Bob?
To answer the question.
To answer the question, yeah.
Good evening. Rich Rider, 9 Pilgrim Lane. I'm on the Council of Aging Board, and I'd like to just provide a little bit of background information.
Could you just answer the question first, and we'll let her speak again, and then you can come back, and I'll give you a chance to speak.
Sure. The garage is going to be used for more than just sheltering the buses during snowstorms. It's going to also protect the exterior and interior during the heat of the summer. It's going to provide storage capacity for the Council on Aging. Our building, when it was designed, was 13,000 square feet, and it ended up being 7,900 square feet. And so, we have virtually no storage on the ground floor of the Council on Aging. The only storage that we have is on the second floor, which is accessible only by a narrow, dangerous, 12-step ladder that's equivalent to a pull-down ladder that you have in your home. And so, the building is not only going to protect the expensive town assets, the eight, 11, and 14 passenger vans or buses, it's also going to provide safety for the Council on Aging staff, who have to remove the snow during the winter. It's going to provide safety for the staff who have to go upstairs to the attic on these dangerous stairs to get things that we store on a seasonal basis and for our programming. And so, for those reasons, safety, protection, those are the main reasons why we're asking for this article to pass. The money that is going to be directed toward the garage are the proceeds from one acre of land that the Council on Aging gave to the developer for the purpose of developing senior housing and property next to us. And so, those proceeds were given or promised to the Council on Aging. The rest of the money is going back to the town. And so, I would urge everyone to support Article 19 on the safety factor and also on the protection of our expensive assets, the buses.
Thank you. Did that answer your question? You want to make a further comment?
I think just that $450,000 for a garage does not serve the seniors of our town... Well, oh, sorry. $300,000 for a garage doesn't serve our seniors of this town very well or the community. So, I vote no.
Okay, thank you. Microphone number one.
What she doesn't realize...
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, Paul Hinckley.
Paul.
And I'm on the Housing Authority. What she doesn't realize, a lot of towns come down and use our senior center. The buses should have been in a garage way back when we built it, but we didn't have the money at that time. It's about time that we give something back to the seniors, and everybody's getting older, and those buses are gonna be full, more than the kids on the school buses. So, I say you should just build the garage and give it to them. They've been trying for years to get a garage. I mean, they're cold in the wintertime when they go to get in. Sometimes they don't start because it's too frozen. Just build the thing. Give the seniors something.
Cut. Last two comments on Article 19.
Jerry Kazanjin, 77 Granite Street. And I'm one of those old people. Basically, it's very simple. We have three vans that the town has purchased. We want to protect them. How many people? I have a one-car garage in my house. Sorry, Louise, my car's in the garage. And that's not right. In the winter, she has to clean all that snow off. But we have three vans, and they should be protected, not only in the winter. Did you see how much yellow is on your car today already? Right? So, we want to protect the vans, like you said, the heat in the summer, it cracks your dashboard, it heats. So, it's a kind of, we're just protecting our equipment that we spent a lot of money for. Simple.
Thank you. Final comment.
Thank you. Mary Generalso Cassano, 98 North Street. I just wanted to reiterate here that the select board negotiated and increased in the original proposed sales price, taking into consideration the additional land from the Council on Aging. The select board agreed to set aside a portion of the proceeds, not to exceed 300, for the design and construction of a garage for the COA buses. And I do know from past, that our former director, over the past many years, they've been asking for this garage for many years. So, I would just say, why would we deny the Council on Aging this? I say vote for that.
Okay. Thank you very much. No further comments. We will put it to a vote. A positive motion would be a vote for...
Can I...
Oh, please, yes, please, Gus.
Yeah, I just want to make one point clear about the financing on this. The $300,000 that we're talking about here, the last speaker was fundamentally correct that this was sort of a negotiation, trying to actually address a number of issues to include concerns of the neighbors that were close to this new project. We didn't give them everything they wanted, but we were trying to fix, or at least address some of their issues. The $300,000 was basically the enticement, if you will, to get the COA to give up that acre that would allow us to move the project further away from the abutting neighbors on the other side of the project. That $300,000, we wouldn't even be talking about it if we hadn't tried to work that arrangement to meet so many needs. So, as you think about that particular money, the only reason that the COA agreed to it was to get the funding to be able to build that garage. It's not like we just kind of pulled money out of the town. This is actually money that we have available to us because of the decisions the COA made. So, as you're voting, just understand, if we hadn't been able to work that deal, we wouldn't be talking about $300,000 at all right now.
Okay. So, we will put to a vote the motion for the design and construction of the garage at the Council of Aging. Article number 19 requires a simple majority. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I deem that the motion carries. Article 20. Article 20 is an article to vote to fund an elementary school feasibility study, found on page 39, offered by the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee and the School Building Committee. Ed Vazella is gonna provide us with a motion and a report.
Move that the town appropriate $250,000 from certified free cash to be expended under the direction of the School Building Committee for paying the cost of a feasibility study for purposes as set out in the warrant. This article would appropriate $250,000 to be expended under the direction of the newly-formed School Building Committee as they work towards a new elementary school project. This appropriation will be transferred from available certified free cash and will increase the total available funds to $500,000. This amount is not expected to fully fund a new feasibility study, but will allow the School Building Committee to keep moving forward. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Questions or comments regarding this motion to move the funds to the elementary school feasibility study? There are no... You do have a question or comment? Yes. Microphone number two first.
Jeff D'Amico, 170 Granite. I just wanted to echo the comment that the amount being appropriated will not fully fund a feasibility study. It will certainly add and improve the work that the Building Committee could do, but to only appropriate $500,000 for a very robust, transparent, and public-engaging process will leave the Building Committee handcuffed in terms of not enough dollars associated with the additional testing, investigation, and work that the Building Committee will do. So, I just wanted to have those comments out there, certainly in favor of adding more money to the pot to allow the Building Committee to move forward and do their work, but I don't think this will be the last time we come and discuss this at town meeting for the feasibility process to be concluded.
Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, thanks for those comments. Microphone number two as well.
Hi. As of right now, I'm undecided on this. So, I just have a couple of genuine questions. Now, before this, when the, when we thought that there would be a school built, was another study made? And could you tell me the year of that, and if the amount of time that's gone by has made that study out of date, and that there's a necessity for this new study? Do you want me to ask those questions one at a time?
No, I think we got them.
All right.
Anybody want to address those? Anyone want to speak to those? I'm not sure who the... Because we don't...
I can do it. So, the original study was approved with an override of $1 million, the feasibility study, and that was done in 2018. As you know, the project failed at town meeting and by the ballot vote in November of 2021. The study does need to be redone. Not all of it, but a significant portion of it will need to be updated as we move forward.
Could I just ask you to state your name, if you would? And I missed that on the front end.
Sean Fitzgerald, 4 Clayton Street.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, a final comment on Article 20.
Dick Judge, 8 Juniper. We've been here before. We were here a couple of years ago. We voted $1 million for this study. As far as I know, that most of that $1 million was spent. I feel personally that there was a predetermined outcome for that $1 million, and we were only offered one option when it came down to it.
You know, I'm gonna rule you out of order. We're not gonna, again, have a referendum on that. If you want to speak to this feasibility study, I'd like you to hear what you have to say.
It absolutely has everything to do with this feasibility study, because this feasibility study is a repeat of our $1 million invested a couple of years ago.
Yep.
I asked for my $1 million back before. I really don't want to ask for my $250,000 or $1 million, because this is an open-ended amount of money that we're appropriating, correct?
I don't think so. I think we're appropriating $250,000.
$250,000, and the, but the end of the article references, this is only a down payment.
Could be. I don't know that that's what we're determining.
Well, it's not, to play dumb here, the person doing the study or helping out with that has already said that this is not enough money.
Okay.
So, I need everyone to understand that we appropriated $1 million, have a feasibility study to give us a couple different options. We were given one option. It doesn't fly to do it all over again, to be given one option again when we get to the end of this.
Okay.
So, I'm asking everyone to turn this motion away, because we can do it better.
Okay.
We need a, we need a new school or a new school reconstructed for these kids now. We don't need to spend another $1 million in a couple of years to think about something that may already be predetermined. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm Mike Weber. I'm Chair of the School Building Committee, co-chair, actually. In reference to the $250,000 in front of us, it is not enough to complete a new feasibility study, for sure. That said, you know, we have an application into the MSBA now. We won't find out that decision until December. And the goal is not to spend all of this $500,000, which will be, you know, the total funds available to us. But as we go, and if we do get into MSBA in December, we'll have a path forward with MSBA, probably. If we don't get into MSBA's program, well, then we'll have a path forward without MSBA. But either way, a new feasibility study needs to be done. To echo your points, we need a school, whether that's a renovation of the existing or a new school, feasibility study is required to do that. So, that said, this will keep the new, last year at town meeting, we stood here and we voted on a warrant article to create a new school building committee. So, in reference to anything that happened prior, regardless of your feelings, a new school building committee was formed in a very different manner than the first one was formed, okay? And we're all working hard right now to get, you know, something in respect to gathering the town input and really, you know, coming together as a community to build something that we need to do. So, you know, as far as the money here that we're asking for tonight, the plan is not to go ahead and spend it all, but we do not want to be caught dead and have to stop our work, because we ran out of money before July of 2024, when fiscal year starts, you know, after this.
Michael, yeah, thank you. And thanks to you and the committee for the early momentum that you have struck in the last couple of months here, getting us started again with this. Kristin.
Christian. Christian Donner, 92 Green Street. Christine, you mentioned some of the, you know, outcomes, some of the results of the last 2018 study will have to be redone. The warrant article specifically lists things like land surveys, topographical studies, wetland surveys, wetland surveys twice, actually, preliminary site development plans. These are not things that have changed in 2018, right? The wetlands haven't changed, the topography hasn't changed, the soil hasn't changed. These things could be reused, right? We don't, can we strike these from the article and ask for a little more specificity from the Building Committee so that we get some confidence that they actually are willing to build on what was already done in the past as opposed to throw it all away? That is my question.
So, what I was hearing is that you want to make sure there isn't a predetermined site, so we shouldn't be looking at just the sites we looked at last time. So, I think this article gives them the broad authority to look at all of the sites available in town.
I think we have looked at all of the sites available in town and reduced the, there was looked at the Scott Land and, you know, out at the hospital, and all these places have been looked at. They were narrowed down through a very thorough process to two sites, Dale or Wheelock. A survey was conducted. Most people wanted it at Dale. Building Committee went ahead, spent the $1 million on Wheelock.
This is where I'm gonna stop you again, Kristin.
Did that happen or not?
We're not here to debate facts of what did happen. We're here to talk about this.
Well, I understand, but we're trying to shape the process.
Correct.
This is, we just signed away one more option to have some influence into how this is being conducted.
So, what is your, are you speaking in opposition and making a proposal?
I'm speaking against approving the article, because this is the last chance that we have to have some control over what's being done. I'm saying, this is very broad, very wishy-washy, there's everything in there and nothing, there isn't the real plan. Let's be, let's ask for specific actions and then appropriate money for that as opposed to broad blanket checks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Last two comments. Microphone number two.
Jerry Pot, 7 Curve Street. So, I am strongly in favor of this. I think we all, as a community, said we wanted a school. It starts here. It's time for us to start figuring out how we build the school. I have faith in the School Building Committee that they'll listen, because I think they want the same thing. I think they want to get a school done. I've been encouraged by the meetings that have taken place so far. I would just, you know, I would once again echo as much as possible to be open to listening. I would also say for all the people here who are still participating, go to the meetings. Make your voice heard now. This is when, you know, this is when it's being built. The decisions we're making at these meetings are all public. If you're interested in it once a year or at a vote when it's too late, it's too late. So, this is an open process. These meetings have been open. We've voted, and we've had committees in town that have appointed people. I believe in the process. We have to start it somewhere. I'm strongly in favor of it.
Thank you. Final comment.
Hello again. I would like to ask a question about the words at the top of page 40. This will increase the total available funds to $500,000, and this amount is not expected to fully fund a new feasibility study. So, if we approve this article, how much money can be spent before we get to vote on it again? Do you know what I'm asking?
$500,000.
$500,000.
Thanks.
Good. No further questions or comments? We're gonna put this to a vote, if we could. So, on Article 20, vote for, to fund the elementary school feasibility study? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Okay, at this point, I just want to thank some folks. I want to thank the Warrant Committee for an extraordinary job, and thank you very much for all that you've done, particularly Jeremy and Sharon.
No, we do.
I know. Yes. I do that, so... Yes, I do that so I get to thank, so people aren't rushing out. We have one more motion. Chris Allen, thank you. Been doing this as long as I have. I really appreciate that. Conrad, for your work there as my deputy moderator, the entire group from Medfield TV, check-in with Katie and Amanda, they're doing great things at Medfield TV, our public safety officers, let's always support them and thank them for what they do. Members of the executive branch, so many people to thank. This isn't a pop-up event, actually. There's a lot, as you guys know, that goes into this, so to maintain our 300, now, what, 72 years of heritage of continuous town meetings, so it's quite profound. Our final article is article number... All right, just by the way, one other comment I wanted to make there. With Kristin and Dick Judge coming up to the microphone, I didn't want to recognize them in the middle of the vote, but Christian, I don't think we've recognized you since the rail trail opened. Thank you for that initiative, you know, thank you. And many of you know Dick from one of my favorite places in town, from the Griss Mill. Thank you for that. I look around the room, I see the people who are, you know, like many of the people up here, who are volunteers, putting their shoulder against the wall, the initiatives that we find, Gene Minio and Belforge, and we're looking forward to seeing what that could become. But, you know, I'm going to fail for not recognizing many, many of you who are here, who are volunteers, who are always doing the things to make this a great community. So, I thank all of you for what you do in that way. Our final article is the article on free cash, and do we have a positive motion from the Warrant Committee?
We do not. We have a negative motion.
Do we have a positive motion from anybody? If we don't, then I'll make a motion to dismiss. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll follow that up with a motion to dissolve the 2023 Annual Town Meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Have a great spring and a great summer. There we go.